Here it's the allotted time for this meeting. Good evening. It's about time for us to rock and roll here. I would like to call to order the quote unquote joint work session of the city council and the urban renewal agency for Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024. Meeting is called to order. And I think we're going to turn this directly over to our finance director, Jennifer Cuellar.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for joining us. Hot topic audits. We've got with us Tanya Moffett. She's the partner we work with at Marina and Company who manages our audit process. We have two more audit cycles with Marina and Company. And they conduct our city audit and also our urban renewal audit. There is a third audit involved in city finances for Mac Water and Light, but they have their own audit firm that does their piece of the financial infrastructure that's included in our annual financial statements. So what I think I'll do is hand it over to Tanya. And kind of a proposed approach that I think worked pretty well in the Audit Committee meeting where we just were is to look at the city audit, then look at the urban renewal audit, then go into the action plans and the issues that came up around the two findings. And then, you know, any questions about upcoming audit process, any of the numbers that are in the documents themselves. We can have discussion and question, Q and A. Does that sound good to folks? Okay, I'm seeing head nods. So, Tanya, take it away. Thank you so much.
Yeah, I'm Tanya Moffett and I am the external auditor, the partner at Marina and Company. And we completed the City of McMinnville's audited financial statements for the year end June 30, 2023. I'm happy to report that we have what's considered an unmodified or a clean opinion on the financial statements that we issued December 28th, 2023. Our opinion on the financial statements are limited to the basic financial statements and the budget to actual statements and the required supplementary information as well as the other supplementary information. The introductory and statistical section of the report have not been audited by us and accordingly, we express no opinion. The management discussion and analysis and the other items in the required supplementary information, we apply limited assurance or we apply limited procedures on and do not express an opinion on that as well. One thing I have to apologize to the Audit Committee members is I did not talk about the fact that the city did not have a single audit this year. So anytime that the city expends over $750,000 of federal funds, typically you would have to have a single audit. Well, this year was a little bit unique in that the city did spend over that amount, but it was for the, it was for COVID funds. And so the OMB basically came out and said that those COVID funds, you didn't have to perform the single audit on. So I just wanted to point that out as well. So for the city's financial statements, there were some new accounting pronouncements this year. And the primary one was GASB 96 for subscription-based information technology or SABITAS. So unfortunately, what that means is that if you look at the June 30, 2023 audited financial statements and compare them to the June 30, 2022, they're not going to be comparable, just like the June 30, 2022 was not comparable to the June 30, 2021 because of the leases standards. So the Government Accounting Standards Board, the standard setters who the city follows for GAAP or generally accepted accounting standards, they've been very busy and having all these rule changes. So unfortunately, you can't compare them and see apples to apples. One thing to also note about the city's financial statement is that it is an annual comprehensive financial report or an ACFER. This means that the city is a part of the Government Finance Officers Association's awards program. And that awards program means that the city goes above and beyond what is required for the financial statements. So for example, the statistical schedules that are included in the financial report that has 10 years' worth of financial data, 10 years' worth of demographic data, that all is something that's not required, but the city puts that information in there so that the citizens and you as those charged with governance have access to that information. I think it's great because you have lots of different information that you can compare over a 10-year period. But be aware that they've had so many changes that they may not be necessarily comparing apples to apples. But I do like to point that out that the city received that for June 30, 2022 and we anticipate that the city will also receive it for June 30, 2023. That takes a lot of time and effort by finance staff as well as other individuals within this organization to do that. When we completed the audit, we didn't have any restrictions or any difficulties placed on us when we completed it. There are some very significant estimates in the financial statements and I'm going to actually pull up on the screen so that I can kind of show you what those are. So I'm hoping you can see the City of McMinnville's financial statements.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So when we look at the statement of net position, which I know it's going to be very small, I apologize for that. It's page 41, it's page 32 of the audited financial statements. On this, it's essentially very, it's equivalent to what would be considered a balance sheet in typical non-government entity. We call it a statement of net position because in government, we like to be different. And so it has the assets and then we have these extra things called deferred outflows of resources, just think of them as another asset. Then we have liabilities, those things that are due that the city owes to other individuals or debt. And then we have deferred outflows of resources. And then what would normally be like equity or owner's capital is net position in governments. So we have some severely significant estimates for the city and the largest estimate right here is the net pension liability as well as the net OPEB liability. These, it's been almost 10 years ago that these started getting put on government financial statements. And as you can see, it's a fairly significant number. This number right here in the third column over, that is the total government. So that's the governmental funds as well as the business-type funds for the city. So this is the city's number. The numbers over here in the far right, those are McMinnville Water and Light because they're a discreetly presented component unit to the city. So when we look at this net pension liability, it's 26 million for the city and other post-employment benefits or OPEB is 1.2 million. I do like to point this out because it's not a number that the city staff is calculating themselves. Oregon PERS calculates those numbers for the city and then provides them. They have actuaries that do it based off of actuary calculations. But I want to show the pension sensitivity because these numbers are highly sensitive to this number that's called the discount rate. So the discount rate is like the interest rate that's being applied. And so as you can see here, this middle column is what's on the face of the financial statement. So this 24 million. If that discount rate decreases by 1%, then that liability increases to 44 million. If that discount rate increases by 1%, then that number would decrease to about 8.8 million. And that's, this is the city's amount and then underneath is the departments or McMinnville Water and Light's amounts. I'd just like to point this out because it's highly volatile what that number is. But then I'm going to point out another schedule back here in required supplementary information. So we've got our pension contributions, which this is page 101 of the city's financial statements. This is a schedule of contributions. And so what this schedule is showing is it's showing how much the city has to pay on an annual basis for pension. And it's about $4 million and the city is making those required contributions. I would be getting concerned if that pension liability, like that pension liability could be affected if the city was not making their statutory required payments. So if there was a deficiency in this column right here, sorry, this middle column right here, because theoretically, as long as the city is making their annual required contributions, they are covering that future pension liability in the future.
Ms. Moffett, we have some questions.
Yes.
Counselor?
I think I already know the answer, but where does the discount rate come from?
The discount rate is set by Oregon PERS. And it typically changes, it just depends. They, I think they changed it four years ago, like four to six years. They usually, they reevaluate it on a annual basis, but they're the ones setting that.
Is it tied to anything?
Yes and no. They have standards, but they have been known to change those standards of what they're looking at.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions?
So the, sorry.
Please, Counselor.
So the, I just want to make this note for the record. So basically, what you're telling us is that the contribution, the statutorily required contributions that we're making are 24% of our payroll, basically. Is that what this says?
I'm sorry, it cut out. I couldn't hear you.
Sorry, I probably wasn't speaking into the speaker. But just to confirm that what I'm looking at on this chart, basically, the contributions as a percent of covered payroll is 24%. So basically, 24% of our total payroll is going to existing pension costs.
Yeah. Almost, because there are, there is some element of our payroll that's not covered. So it's slightly different. It's a very small amount that's not included as, I think of it as PERS-able covered payroll.
Seasonal employees and...
Yeah, people who work less than 600 hours in a year. There are some payouts that depending on what type of PERS plan you're on are covered and others aren't. Right, the, well, but the workback employees, I think we are playing employer.
The workbacks are included in there.
Yeah. It, correct. So, but there is a slight difference between what is covered payroll and what is total payroll.
Thank you.
Yep. And the same goes for the other post-employment benefits is the contractually required. As you can see, these numbers have been going down for, and this is other post-employment benefits, OPEB. So as you can see, it's a very small percentage. And then even smaller when you look at McMinnville Water and Light down here. So I just want to point that out because there's always estimates in financial statements, but the significant one that is driving some of these numbers is that pension liability, just because it's so large in the financial statements. Some of the other accounting estimates are like compensated absences. We don't know exactly when employees are going to take their vacation. So they may take it in two years from now and they might be at a higher rate of pay. So it's based off of their current rate of pay as of what they were making at June 30, 2023. Another estimate would be depreciation. We don't know exactly how long an asset's going to last. So that's all based off of an estimate. But again, those large estimates are around the pension liability and OPEB. So I like to just point that out. One thing that we also look at when we do the audit is the Oregon State regulators have asked municipal auditors to look at some very specific things that are not necessarily normally included in a financial statement audit. And so some of the things that we look at is like budget requirements. You know, was the budget posted in the newspaper so that the public had an opportunity to come and talk about it? Did the city spend within their budgetary constraints? We look at ORS 279, which is public purchasing. Did the city do a large project? And did they follow Oregon public purchasing rules and, you know, get bids on those projects? And then when they got awarded the project, did that, whoever was the successful bidder, did they name the city on the insurance? Like, we look at things like that that are not necessarily financial related, but that the Oregon State Legislature has said are important rules. And so they want Oregon municipal auditors to look at it for compliance. And so we have done that. And for the city, there was only one item that we noted where expenditures in the general fund for the budgetary category of non-departmental was over budget by $1,407. This sometimes happens. You get an invoice in after year-end that was already spent and it didn't quite get estimated correctly. If this was a larger number, I would probably be more concerned. It's also only one category out of all the funds that the city has. So I'm not concerned about that at this time. We did have two findings in the city's audit as well as the urban renewal agency. I'm going to wait just a minute to talk about those and then move on to the urban renewal agency unless anybody has specific questions on the city's audited financial statements at this time.
No questions, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'm like, you're so small on my screen, so I appreciate the feedback. So we also completed our audit for McMinnville Urban Renewal Agency and we had an unmodified or clean opinion on this urban renewal agency as well. For the urban renewal agency, our opinion for the agency is limited to the basic financial statements and other supplementary information. We applied limited procedures to the management discussion and analysis. And then we express no opinion on the agency officials. So if anybody's name is spelled wrong, nod it. So for the urban renewal agency, they had an increase in net position or what would normally be looked at as like equity. So that's a positive trend for the urban renewal agency. We also did not have any compliance findings for the Oregon state regulations. When we were looking at all of these things, they did not have any findings that would be listed right here on this report. Any questions on the urban renewal agency before I go into the findings? Okay. So I'm going to stop sharing for just a minute and kind of explain the level of findings and how we report findings. So we have different levels of findings that auditors give. And so we have non-reportable findings, which are these low ones that are below what we are going to be providing to those charged with governance. So like, if we saw this did not happen, but just as an example, if we saw that like a check was not signed and it got through the bank, we might make a recommendation, hey, you might want to look at your policies around that to make sure that that doesn't happen in the future. So those are non-reportable because it's like very, very miniscule. It was an accident, very small, not concerned about it. Then we have what are considered reportable findings. So we have what are called significant deficiencies, which are right here in the middle. And then we have on the top of that, material weaknesses. So significant deficiencies are ones that we find that aren't a large enough dollar amount to make us concerned that the financial statements are materially misstated. And there's like this whole calculation that we do with the numbers to be able to determine what materiality is. And so those are those middle-level findings. And then material weaknesses are ones that we think, hey, you know what? This is a large enough dollar amount that it would materially misstate the financial statements if this error was not corrected in the financial statements. One of the questions that I got in the Audit Committee meeting, which was great, is, okay, I don't understand how you have an unmodified or clean opinion on the financial statements, but you have these material weaknesses. So the way that that works is that because the city corrected those things that we identified as material weaknesses and then the financial statements are now correct because those things have been corrected in there, that's how we can issue a clean or an unmodified opinion on the financial statements. If the city decided, hey, you know what? We don't want to make those changes. We'll take the material weakness, but we don't want to make those changes in the financial statements, then you would have a modified opinion. So that's the difference between a clean opinion and a non-clean opinion or an unmodified and a modified opinion. So now I'm going to talk about what those two findings were that we had on the financial statements. The first one, and I'm going to pull it up just so you can see it. So finding 2023-001. Essentially, what happened is that we found that there was some capital expenditures that had got expensed in the previous year, so in 2022. And these expenditures were related to the downtown parking upgrades as well as the Third Street, Third Street, Streetscape improvement project. And these were personnel services contracts that didn't get captured because they weren't in materials and services or in capital outlay. And so that, the city has identified that there is some controls there. And so we made a recommendation that the city should revise its capital asset policies to improve and review those expenditures classifications. So that's what happened with the first one. And then the 2023-002, this was for the urban renewal loans receivable and deferred revenue that wasn't captured properly on the trial balance. And so our recommendation was that the city revise its loans policies and internal tracking to ensure that the loans receivable and deferred revenue are properly reported. So where you're going to see those findings in the financial statements is on the statement of net position, sorry, the statement of activity. So this is the government-wide statement of activity. And unfortunately, this is a two-page report. And if I had them side by side, you wouldn't be able to read it. So what we're looking at is this prior period adjustment down here. So it's this line right here. It's 209,000. I also want to point out here that McMinnville Water and Light also had a prior period adjustment. And theirs was for accounts receivable and timber revenues for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2022 for their water system after they determined that they had incorrectly recorded certain timber revenues in the wrong period. So again, McMinnville Water and Light is a separate entity and they would have came up with their own plan of action and corrective actions for that particular finding that they had as well. So I don't know, Jennifer, do you want? I can take questions about the findings or do you want to go over the plan of action?
Do folks have questions of Tanya? Or do you want me to kind of outline what we're, what we're planning to do?
I mean, I know we have a plan to present. If any questions are about the plan, I would say let's hold them until after the presentation. But if there's other preemptive questions you'd like to ask. Great. Okay, so let's go over the plan of action then.
Okay, super. So we've got slightly different things that we're going to be working on for the two issues. So with the capital, there are, there are a couple of places where determining what to capitalize can, can be a difficult judgment call. And so where these issues were, were recognizing that there were personal architectural services being paid for out of professional services that, that had crossed the threshold to being capitalizable expenses that would be wrapped up into the capital value of the project once it's built. So neither, neither one of the, of the professional services on the Third Street, Streetscape or for the downtown parking actually was shovels-in-the-ground kind of work. It was the pre-work, the professional services helping to design that kind of stuff. So we want to do some trainings around that. But then another issue that will frequently come up with, in the area of capital, is making the determination of whether what you're doing is repair and maintenance versus making an actual capital investment, maybe in an existing building or other capital asset. So I think that's another area where we could really benefit from getting some strong training on those topics and having resource materials available for folks, not only in finance, but throughout the departments that are either actively and consistently engaging in capital project work. But I also think folks in the admin department or other support services being aware of these kinds of issues because they will support across the organization. They also could benefit and be helpful in terms of, hey, have you thought about the capital potential implication of an activity when we're out doing work? So it's, it's one of those things as a pretty decentralized organization that you can, you run some risks in this area more than if you had a real centralized approach to a lot of these issues. So that's one element of it. We've already, just this week, contracted with a CPA that does work in the municipal area, is very active in Oregon GFOA circles to help support us developing the training, carrying out some of the training, creating resource materials and also doing a review of our policies so that we're, we're able to be, you know, more clear about what we're doing in this area. So that's the, that's the basics of the plan around the capital issues that came up, around the loans. The main focus there is going to be on the policies and procedures side of things. This is, it's not a terribly common activity to be loaning funds to other parties. That's not a, that's not a frequent activity in a municipal organization, whereas capital work just, you know, comes up a lot, right? Every year, there's going to be some kind of capital investments. So I don't think it's so much a training issue, but we, we do know that in the urban renewal plan, there will likely be future loans made to other local businesses. So we need to have a better infrastructure and policy base to be able to build future work so that we don't inadvertently miss this kind of thing in the future. So it'll be working with folks to help us develop policies in the loan area because right now, the city doesn't have any policies in this genre. So specifically, we want to be looking at it for these types of loans. But we also, we're doing internal borrowing. We're, there are other loan activities that happen. So I see this as a real prompt to look at that whole portfolio of policy areas and make improvements. make improvements there as well. So those are the basics of what we're looking at in terms of putting together over the course of the next five months. I want us to be on much stronger footing as we're wrapping up this year, but I wouldn't be surprised, or I know that this work will continue on. In the action plan, it has that we'll complete the work by June 30 of 2024, but it will continue on. So just want to also mention that.
Great, thank you. Are there any questions at this time? Counselor Chenoweth.
So going up to the kind of the 10,000-foot level, on both of these, this was not a matter of we didn't put stuff in our books that should have been there. This is a matter of they weren't in the right place. Am I understanding this correctly?
The capital, yes, that's absolutely true. In terms of the loans, because we're in a municipal organization, we're so focused on the annual and the budget, so all of that was included in our financials, but we don't book our long-term receivables and long-term liabilities in the same way. And so that component of it, it was just like, it wasn't visible. It wasn't on our radar screen, and it should have been. So I don't know if that distinction helps or goes to your question.
It kind of does. I'm just, what I, I'm grateful for all the work, and I think the fact that we have two, for lack of a better way to put it, relatively small errors, and a plan to correct them so that going forward, we don't have this happening again, I'm very appreciative of. I'm just trying, you know, I know enough about accounting to be incredibly dangerous. I took a little bit of accounting in college, hit cost accounting, and said, this is horrific. And that was the end of my accounting days. So I don't have a lot of, this isn't my area of expertise, but I am a little worried about what I see as generally accepted accounting principles. I see the word generally. That seems to mean to indicate this is what everybody should know as accountants. This is what we're supposed to be doing. And when I see both of these were failures to account according to those, that makes me a little nervous. And then secondarily, I'm curious as to, is there a lot of changes occurring in these principles that would have caused us not to be aware of this? And how do we make sure if there are changes going forward? I mean, I appreciate one-time training, but going forward, what if we have changes in these principles, which it sounds like probably happen not too unfrequently, that we're being kept abreast so we don't keep running into these kinds of problems?
It's, I appreciate everything that you've just said and couldn't agree more. There are ongoing things and business processes that we need to have in place that will make it easier for us not to miss these things. So that's what we're going for. You're correct to put your finger on the fact that standards change, and governmental accounting standards, every year, there's a new thing. And Tanya pointed out a couple of the more recent ones that came on board. So when they're new and coming up, they're more on our radar screen because we're hearing about it. That's why it's so essential for us to be participating and attending Oregon GFOA and keeping abreast of these kinds of changes out in the professional environment of municipal accounting. But it does reflect the fact that we are resource-challenged, and every department faces risks. And this is one of our risk areas, where being decentralized and just not able to have professional capacity in every different type of accounting area, it's just not realistic to expect. So we need to find the ways to reduce those risks. And so one of the things that we've done is, I believe I mentioned it, that we've contracted with a CPA firm to help us build some of these things out, and we'll focus on these areas initially. But there are other areas, just perennially, where we need to stay on top of things, like one of the places where I'm always concerned about is the contracting activities and making sure that we're doing all of that properly. That's an important area for us. And, I don't know, just, but the general meat and potatoes, revenues coming in that are routine, and the expenses going out, that is one place where we're, I think, quite strong in terms of the internal controls and real heightened awareness and a real commitment to staying on top of it in terms of staff across the organization. They do the right things, day in, day out, in terms of the finances. So that part is really strong.
Well, the only other question I have, and I don't know if this would be for you or for the auditor, but had this, hypothetically, we have this problem that exists, and hypothetically, the auditor didn't catch it. What is the ramifications going forward if this had gotten by without it being caught by either of us?
Well, this actually is kind of the circumstance, because the construction in progress that got missed with the capitalization work, the vast majority of those expenses happened in fiscal year 2022, so last fiscal year. And so when Crystal was doing the work on the capital for this year, she noticed them. So she brought these forward, and so this is what's being corrected. So that's where the prior period adjustment line is where you would see when those kinds of things are missed from prior years.
Okay. So your answer would be eventually it would be caught?
Hopefully.
Okay, thank you.
So if you don't mind, I'd like to allude, like, go a little bit further into Jennifer's response on the different bases of accounting, because I know that this is probably one of the areas that is the most confusing about government financial statements, because it sounds really funny when you say, well, we don't put that on the books. We don't put those long-term loans receivable on the books. We also don't put capital assets on the books. And what that means is they're not getting recorded on the trial balance. And the reason why is because, unfortunately, we like to make things really, really complicated in government, and so we have three different bases of accounting in the financial statements. And I'm just going to show you because it will kind of help me explain what I mean by that. So when we have our government-wide financial statements, this is the statement of net position and the statement of activity. So this is on page 32, as well as 33 and 34. These financial statements are what we call full accrual basis. So we have all of our liabilities, all of our assets, everything is here on this statement. This is a full accrual. But we live most of our days in government in our budgetary statements. And so I'm going to show you, we live more in a budgetary world. And so our budgetary basis is really close to cash basis. And so it's, I think, most of you are pretty familiar with the budget process, sitting through the budget committee meetings, hopefully. And so in Oregon, we have budgets for every single one of our funds, and we're looking at our revenues and our expenditures. And so this is really what's coming in this year, what's going out this year. So our revenues is everything that's coming in, our expenditures are everything that's going out. So this is the typical basis that we spend most of our time looking at on a day-to-day basis. Most of the department heads, they're looking at their budgets for their individual funds that they're responsible for, and they're looking to say, okay, how much budget do I have? Do I have enough money to be able to spend the actual amount? So this is what most of the accounting records are in this basis. But then we have a modified accrual basis for our governmental funds. So this is back up towards the front of the financial statements on page 36, 37, 38, and 39. And so the modified accrual basis, this doesn't have any long-term things. So it doesn't have any, like, debt. It doesn't have any of our capital assets or things like that. And so this is what's considered a modified accrual basis. So unfortunately, because we have three different bases of accounting that we're looking at for governments, not all of those are recorded on the trial balance. And so unfortunately, that's what happened with that loan receivable and the deferred revenue, is that it's something that is long-term, and so it's not typically tracked on the trial balance. So I know it's really, really confusing, and I apologize that, you know, you had to take cost accounting. That was always a lovely class in college. I would not teach that one for the life of me, but it makes it extra difficult to catch everything when you have the three different bases of accounting, and not all of those bases are captured on the trial balance, because you can't physically have them all in the same place. So those longer-term ones are kind of, those long-term activities are kept off the books and then just put in the financial statements. So I know I probably just made it way more confusing. Hopefully, that kind of made sense.
And I've used a bunch of time, and others may have questions, so I'm good. Thank you. Thank you very much.
No other questions. All right, well, thank you so much. Anything further from anybody on our city team?
I would like to just say thank you to all of the city staff and all of their help throughout the audit to make it a smooth process. I also want to apologize for not being there in person. I just, I started not feeling well yesterday and had been around somebody that had tested positive for COVID, so I didn't want to take any chances at getting anybody sick, so.
We appreciate that. We also appreciate your work and working with our teams at the city, and thank you so much and for taking the time to walk us through this tonight. And we all hope that you do not fall ill, of course.
Thank you.
All right, well, wonderful. With that, we will close the works, whoops, work session. I hit the microphone with the, not the, so we'll close the work session and take a 16-minute break. Thank you. Same Zoom link? If you're watching online, you can, or on Zoom, you can just stay where you are. If you're watching online, you can, or on Zoom, you can just stay where you are. All right, folks, let's get this, let's get this rolling. Line of evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, the Tuesday, January twenty-third, 2024, regular city council meeting of the city of McMinnville. It is seven PM, and I would ask our city recorder to do a roll call.
Counselor Minkie.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta.
Counselor Geary is absent this evening.
Counsel President Carvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drapkin.
I am here, thank you so much. Before we get started this evening, I want to let the council and the community know a couple of things. One, I have canceled our work session for next February thirteenth, and instead, we're moving that to February twenty-first. And the reason is, is that I have asked our community development department, our city managers department, our police department, our public works department, and our legal department, and did I say our police department, to work collectively on creating a work session that explores all of the laws surrounding camping and prohibited camping in the state of Oregon and the city of McMinnville, so that we can take a deeper dive. This will be in lieu of a novel response, and by novel, I mean a very long-written response to the public testimony that we received two weeks ago. I have scheduled this as a four-hour-long work session. We're not required to take all of that time, of course, but this is an intricate issue, and there are a lot of ins and outs of it that we really need to explore and explore in depth. I've really specifically set it for that February twenty-first date, so that the council has an opportunity to hear from, to hear about all of these nuances, ask questions, have some open dialogue in advance of what we have now finally rescheduled is our March eighteenth joint work session with the McMinnville School District. And so I'm hoping, so once we get through kind of those two meetings, the council will have some opportunity to talk about the direction they would like to go in terms of how we continue to pursue this topic. And then I did want to correct the record. It was stated in here previously that I haven't been supportive of our community groups, and that's simply not true. I've written and said verbally, there's been community effort that's been really effective. The poster that the community task force developed, I told Lindsay Wurde, when I saw her in person, how I thought that was great, and she said that she had designed that. That was a great useful tool for our businesses. I've written that to you as well. There's a lot more businesses that could use that poster. There could be a Spanish-language version of that poster. That was a really effective communication tool. And I've also talked about the no trespass agreements, and that is a really, that's really effective. That changes our ability to respond in real time. Again, we have many, many, many businesses in McMinnville. Not every single business in McMinnville has been approached and knows about that tool, although the effort has greatly expanded, including working with the MDA now to get downtown businesses. So that is an ongoing effort, and that would be great. I think the clarity that I'd like to add there is that at a certain point, the community group started making policy suggestion, and the intent, as I understood it, was that the community group was meant to be nimble and responsive and do community-oriented actions, not be a policy suggesting board. The first policy suggestion was after we opened our parks and RVs moved in, and the policy suggestion was, close the parks, close the parks. And of course, we couldn't do that, because thousands of people would have been affected by that. The children that were in programs, all of the families that would have been needing those. Instead, it took us about three weeks to figure out an administrative change we could make that would be legal, that would have a real effect on how our parks were being used and how our park parking lots were being used. This other policy suggestion that has come forward also hasn't really given the city the consideration, I would say, including that it asked for a change to an ordinance, which, as I've described many times, was legally vetted three times. It came forward at a time when we hadn't had a city attorney for two years. But we do have a city attorney now. Things change. We're very happy you're here. So with the ability to have legal review in-house now of our ordinance, and knowing that this policy suggestion that came forward does affect all of these departments, not just, not just the police. It affects planning, it affects administration, it affects public works, it affects our police department. So they'll be able to put together a really great working document. That won't be the only thing that we'll discuss at that meeting. We're going to discuss all laws that have come about and changed, and try to get a good feel for where we are in the legal landscape right now, so that the council can make informed decisions. And then lastly, I just want to say that you all know that I was personally attacked in that meeting, you heard that, and you also know that over the last couple of years, especially since the last national election cycle, I've worked very, very hard to make sure that this council communicates respectfully and beyond civilly, but with kindness. And it has been a long haul to get us here. And I know you know it, because when we did our strategic planning, it was mentioned over and over again to the facilitator, that we have had a stark difference in the way the council was communicating and the way the council is communicating now. And I think you all know that I wouldn't let anybody personally attack you. I've certainly stopped attacks on staff and even shut down commentary when it was going in that direction here. And I don't know why I didn't stop it when I was being personally attacked, but I didn't. And so I just want to say that it is up to this council to set the tone and to make sure that we are not allowing that to happen. I bring up the 2020 because we're going into an election year, and the fact is, people's fervor will be up. And we here are a nonpartisan body, and we have the ability to set the tone for the community, that we can have productive dialogue, we can absolutely disagree on things, and we don't have to go to personally attacking one another. We are all here because we love the city of McMinnville. And so I ask our community as well to drop personal attacks from this discourse. It is not productive. I know you are here because you also love McMinnville, so let's all act like it. And with that, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. I have the pleasure of reading a proclamation this evening, so let me get this out. This proclamation is the designation of February 2024 as Black History Month. Whereas the city of McMinnville is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community, and whereas the official theme of Black History Month 2024 is Black Resistance, examining how African-Americans have fought repression from America's earliest days, from escaping the plantation to the rise out of poverty and the struggle for equal housing and education, to the struggle for voting rights, the resistance lives on even in the 21st century. And whereas Black Americans have made invaluable contributions to Oregon's economic, political, spiritual, and cultural development while maintaining and promoting their own unique culture and history. And[810.73]
All right, folks, let's get this, uh, let's get this rolling. Line of evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the order, the Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, regular, uh, city council meeting of the city of McMinnville. Uh, it is 7:00 PM, and I would ask our city recorder to do a roll call.
Counselor Minkie.
Here.
Counselor Chenoweth.
Present.
Counselor Payne.
Here.
Counselor Peralta. Counselor Geary is absent this evening. Counsel President Carvin.
Here.
And Mayor Drabkin.
I am here. Thank you so much. Um, before we get started this evening, I want to let the council and the community know a couple of things. Um, one, I have couns- canceled our work session for next, uh, February 13th, and instead, we're moving that to February 21st. Um, and, uh, the reason is, is that I have asked our community development, um, department, our city managers department, our police department, our public works department, and our legal department, um, uh, and did I say our police department, to work collectively on, um, creating a work session that explores all of the laws surrounding, uh, camping and prohibited camping, um, in the state of Oregon and the city of McMinnville, so that we can take a deeper dive. This will be in lieu of a, a novel response. Uh, and by novel, I mean a very long-written, uh, response to, um, the public testimony that we received two weeks ago. Um, I have scheduled this as a four-hour-long work session. Uh, we're not required to take all of that time, of course, but this is a, um, uh, an intricate issue, and, um, there are a lot of ins and outs of it, um, that we really need to explore and explore in depth. I've really specifically set it for that February 21st date, so that the council has an opportunity to hear from, um, uh, to hear about all of these nuances, ask questions, have some open dialogue, um, in advance of what we have now finally rescheduled is our March 18th joint, uh, work session with the McMinnville School District. Um, and, uh, and so I'm hoping for, uh, so once we get through kind of those, um, two meetings, the council will have some opportunity, uh, to talk about the direction they would like to go in terms of how we, uh, continue to pursue this topic. Uh, and then I did want to correct the record. Um, uh, it was stated in here previously that I haven't been supportive of our community groups, and that's simply not true. I've written and said verbally, there's been community effort that's been really effective. Um, the poster that the community task force developed, um, I, I told Lindsay Woodard when I saw her in person how I thought that was great, and she said that she had designed that. That was a great useful tool for our businesses. I've written that to you as well. Um, there's a lot more businesses that could use that poster. There could be a Spanish-language version of that poster. That was a really effective communication tool. And I've also talked about, um, the no trespass agreements, and that is a really, um, that's really effective. That changes our ability to respond in real time. Again, we have many, many, many businesses in McMinnville. Not every single business in McMinnville has been approached and knows about that tool, although the effort has greatly expanded, including working with the MDA now to get downtown businesses. So that is an ongoing effort, and that would be great. I think the, um, the clarity that I'd like to add there is that at a certain point, um, the community group started making policy suggestion, and the intent, as I understood it, was that the community group was meant to be nimble and responsive and do community-oriented actions, not be a policy suggesting board. The first policy suggestion was after we opened our parks and RVs moved in, and the policy suggestion was, "Close the parks. Close the parks." And of course, we couldn't do that, because thousands of people would have been affected by that. The children that were in programs, all of the families, uh, that would have been needing those. Instead, it took us about three weeks to figure out an administrative change we could make that would be legal, that would have a real effect on how our parks were being used and how our park parking lots were being used. Um, this other policy suggestion that has come forward, um, also hasn't really given the city, uh, the, uh, consideration, I would say, um, including that it asked for a change to an ordinance which, as I've described many times, was legally vetted three times. It came forward at a time when we hadn't had a city attorney for two years. Um, but we do have a city attorney now. Things change. Uh, we're very happy you're here. So, um, with the, uh, ability to have legal review in-house now of our ordinance, um, and knowing that this policy suggestion that came forward does affect all of these departments, not just, uh, not just the police. It affects planning, it affects administration, it affects public works, um, it affects our police department. So they'll be able to put together, um, a really great working document. That's, won't be the only thing that we'll, um, discuss at that meeting. We're going to discuss all laws that have come about and changed, and try to get a good feel for where we are in the legal landscape right now, um, so that the council can make, uh, informed decisions. Um, and then lastly, I just want to say that, uh, you all know that, uh, I was personally attacked in that meeting. Uh, you heard that. And you also know that over the last couple of years, especially, uh, since the last national election cycle, I've worked very, very hard to make sure that this council communicates respectfully and, and beyond civilly, but with kindness. And it has been a long haul to get us here. And I know you know it, um, because when we did our strategic planning, it was mentioned over and over again to the facilitator, that we have had a stark difference in the way the council was communicating and the way the council's communicating now. And I think you all know that I wouldn't let anybody personally attack you. I've certainly stopped attacks on staff and, uh, even shut down commentary when it was going in that direction here. Um, and I don't know why I didn't stop it when I was being personally attacked, but I didn't. Um, and so I just want to say that it is up to this council to set the tone and to make sure that we are not allowing that to happen. Um, I bring up the 2020 because we're going into an election year, and the, the fact is, people's fervor will be up. And we here are a nonpartisan body, and we have the ability to set the tone for the community, that we can have productive dialogue. We can absolutely disagree on things, and we don't have to go to personally attacking one another. We are all here because we love the city of McMinnville. And so I ask our community as well to drop personal attacks from this discourse. It is not productive. I know you are here because you also love McMinnville, so, um, let's all act like it. And, uh, with that, please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Um, I have the pleasure of reading a proclamation this evening. So let me get this out. This proclamation is the designation of February 2024 as Black History Month. Whereas the city of McMinnville is committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion as a fundamental aspect of our community. And whereas the official theme of Black History Month 2024 is Black Resistance, examining how African-Americans have fought repression from America's earliest days, from escaping the plantation to the rise out of poverty and the struggle for equal housing and education, to the struggle for voting rights, the resistance lives on even in the 21st century. And whereas Black Americans have made invaluable contributions to Oregon's economic, political, spiritual, and cultural development while maintaining and promoting their own unique culture and history. And whereas we acknowledge and denounce the history of structural and institutional racism towards Black Americans in Oregon and throughout the United States, which has directly resulted in socio- and, um, socioeconomic health and other disparities that persist to this day. And whereas Black Americans have sought ways to nurture and protect lives and for the autonomy of their physical and intellectual bodies through voluntary immigration, nonviolence, education, literature, sports, media, and legislation and politics. And whereas Black History Month serves to celebrate the accomplishments, culture, and contributions of the Black community while honoring Black history. And whereas we as a community must work together to end discrimination, to achieve true equality for Black Oregonians, and build a McMinnville where all residents can realize their full potential. Now therefore I, Remy Drabkin, Mayor of the city of McMinnville, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Black History Month, and witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand this 23rd day of January in the year of 2024. Now, we will now go to, uh, invitations for public comment. Um, I will remind everyone that any interested audience member is invited to provide comments, and any comment provided that requires some type of follow-up will be assigned to a staff member. Anyone may speak on any topic other than a matter in litigation, a quasi-judicial land use matter, or a matter scheduled for public hearing at some future date. Uh, comments will be limited to three minutes per person for a total of 30 minutes. If you are on Zoom and you wish to speak, please use the raise your hand feature, and when your turn is up, we will announce your name and unmute your mic. Or you may also send a chat directly to our city recorder, Claudia Sisneros, and she will announce you. Do we have anyone signed up for public comment this evening?
Yes, William Sykes, on Zoom, has signed up.
Thank you. We will start with you this evening, Mr. Sykes. Nice to, uh, have you back with us again.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
We certainly can.
Thanks for having me back. Thank you, esteemed council and others. I'm William Sykes from McMinnville. I, I'm going to quote Municipal Code 810-260 with regard to vehicle noises. The use of any vehicle or engine, either stationary or moving, in a manner that causes or creates any loud or unnecessary grating, grinding, rattling, or other noise, including the discharge in open air of the exhaust of any steam engine, internal combustion engine, motorboat, or motor vehicle, except through a muffler or other device which will effectively prevent loud or explosive noises and the emission of annoying smoke. I approached the council on this topic on December 12th, 2023, and trust my message was well received. I'm here again tonight to talk about the noise problem we have in McMinnville with loud vehicles. These are typically vehicles with modified exhaust systems that rip up and down the streets all day and now all night long. Some of them even pop like a machine gun. If you haven't heard this, you will, and it's very stressful. I believe that these vehicles are in violation of 810-260, but for some reason, we are unable or unwilling to enforce the ordinance. Now, I'm going to tell you two quick sad stories about how this has affected my family. First story, my wife and I were walking down Third Street with our seven-year-old and our five-year-old boys to have some dinner on a nice Saturday night. It can be so beautiful on Third Street. The boys loved the arcade, the new arcade joysticks, and stopped to glare in the window. As they did, one of these loud vehicles came down Third, was extremely loud with the popping noise, so loud that my older boy started crying. He started crying because this young man is cruising his car with modified exhaust down Third Street. My boy started crying while he was looking into the arcade, smiling. The cars cruise up and down Third Street, revving and popping most evenings. They're the same cars every evening. The second story is about walking my younger boy to daycare. It was a typical morning, a bit rainy, and yeah, some of us walk around in the rain. Drop-off was really, is really a sweet moment. The daycare is super quiet, cozy in the morning. The kids are sleepy and happy to see their peers and their teacher. As we were pulling my boy out of the stroller, one of these cars came ripping down the street with a loud, harsh, brutal sound, one that you might think would break glass. My boy starts crying. Can't stop. Instead of a peaceful drop-off with the other quiet kids, our boy is sobbing because the loud car scared him. My five-year-old boy cried because a loud car is ripping down the street on Elm Street. We were just trying to take him to school in the morning. We can do better here. Please, city council, let's start a conversation about noise pollution in McMinnville. I'm confident that there are solutions that should be considered. Please join us at StopTheNoiseMac.com. Thank you and have a good evening.
Thanks. Will you repeat the name of the website? The timer went off just as you were saying it.
Thank you. It's StopTheNoiseMac, M-A-C dot com. StopTheNoiseMac.com.
Okay, and then, did you have a follow-up? I can't remember if, um, uh, if I, if we asked for follow-up. Did you have follow-up from our team at the city from after your last testimony?
I, I have not, and I apologize if I missed it, but I have not.
Okay. Do you think we could have somebody from, uh, either Public Works or Police, or both, follow up, um, just, uh, to dive into the conversation a little bit more? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else signed up for public comment?
No one else has signed up.
Okay. Would anybody in the gallery or on Zoom like to provide public comment this evening? Not hearing any. We will go to advice and information items. We'll start with reports from our counselors on committee and board assignments. Uh, if you don't mind, I'll start on my left with Counselor Chenoweth this evening.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Parkway Committee met, and it looks like 2A of the bypass is now, um, heading toward bid. We have a, it looks like the latest potential bid date of May 2nd, um, but it could be moved up depending on how fast the PLA gets completed and approved from the feds. Um, that's good news. That's the interchange at Highway 219 and where the bypass currently ends in Newburgh. Um, uh, it will take two seasons to complete, um, two paving seasons from the point in which that process, uh, once the paperwork is signed and the bid is done. Um, the EVLC met, and it had a very heavy agenda. We just elected our new chair and vice chair, which is the same chair and vice chair we had before. That's my report.
Thank you so much. And to my right, um, Counselor Peralta.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, council governments did not meet due to weather, uh, and MCM11 met despite the weather. Can people hear me now?
Yes.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Council governments didn't meet due to the weather. MCM11 did meet during the weather. I was not able to attend. Um, however, the main report is the internship program they have is going well. They've started a new MAC movie club, which is happening on Saturdays, and I'd like to thank, uh, Chief Scales and staff of Provoking Hope for, uh, sitting, uh, in a, on an interview on harm reduction and policing, uh, under Measure 110. Uh, that is currently running on MCM11 and is available for viewing on YouTube.
Thank you. Counselor Payne.
Audit, Audit Committee just met, and information was reviewed in our previous meeting. Uh, Lipsec, the January 24 Lipsec meeting was canceled due to lack of attendance, so the next one is scheduled for March 27th. Landscape Review Committee meeting sworn in new member, I'm probably going to butcher her last name, and I apologize, but Eva Redinger and Carlton Davidson was sworn in for another term. Jamie Fleckenstein was, um, continued his appointment as chair, and Brian Wicks was appointed as Bryce Chair, Vice Chair. And, um, we discussed a parking lot design plan, which was sent back for modification. That's all.
Thank you, Counselor Minkie.
Okay, tomorrow is the 2024 point time homeless count. Uh, getting off to a good start. There are drop-in sites listed. Housing Authority of Yamhill County, McMinnville Library, the Suk Kitchen at St. Barnabas, Second Street Community Center, Newburgh Library, Sheridan American Legion, and Willow Mine Library. My understanding is, even though there are drop-in sites, uh, they are also going to make an effort to go out to various places in the community where they feel, you know, like in Compass and some other, uh, areas, and to do these counts. They want a very thorough count this year. They have had a large voter turnout, or voter, uh, volunteer turnout, and they're excited and hopeful that we will have a good count this year. Uh, in other matters regarding YCAP, Senate Bill, uh, 5506, they were, were, they were awarded, uh, under 5506, $580,000 for the regional food bank. Of that, $165,614 was approved today to purchase a Freightliner truck to deliver food. Uh, let's see. The meltdown kicks off on February 1st. Everybody go and eat your cheese sandwiches. Uh, Yamhill YCAP Development is working to receive an $889,088 grant from Yamhill County HHS for the turnkey program electrical upgrades, as well as fast food, uh, or I'm sorry, the food bank onsite pantry. And I believe that's it on YCAP. Oh, I, I do want to say that, uh, they are planning to send out a response. There's been some complaints in regard to their, the ice storm response for YCAP, and they will be sending out to anyone who complained. They received a number of complaints, and they'll be sending out a response outlining what they feel are YCAP's policy responsibilities. And Affordable Housing is tomorrow at 10 o'clock, and we'll be voting on officers. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Council President.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Airport Commission was canceled on its normal meeting, and then it was rescheduled for the 16th, and then it was canceled for the snow, and then it happened today, and I had a scheduling conflict, so I don't have a report on that. Uh, YCOM didn't meet this month. Um, Visit McMinnville, we met last week via Zoom because of the snow, and, uh, nothing of great substance there. Outside, we're going to have our annual planning session as a board the end of February, and, uh, lots of good things happening over there, uh, momentum-wise. And then, uh, Fire District, we swear on our new fire chief this Friday, uh, from 6 to 8 with the swearing-in ceremony at 6:30. So the public and all of you are invited.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Uh, I have, um, largely, uh, good news to report tonight. The first is that we now do have an OB-GYN at our hospital and a second coming on board. So we, we have had, not had those, um, essential medical services here for some time. So very much thankful to O'Malley Valley Medical Center for prioritizing that, uh, and the health of our community with that. And, uh, they have stated that now, moving into this next year, their focus is going to be on early childhood health. And so we appreciate their partnership as always. Um, and, and that actually leads me to, um, I was able to attend the U.S. Conference of Mayors, um, and the top three topics, uh, at this nationwide conference were homelessness, opioid addiction, and mental health. Uh, these are issues that are, uh, plaguing our entire nation, um, not just our fair city. Uh, I took a note, uh, one person said homelessness is a multi-systems failure, and it will take a multi-systems response. When, another session I went to, we talked about alleviating poverty, and the overwhelming, uh, the, the overwhelming sentiment was that the key to eliminating poverty in the long term is childcare, childcare, childcare. Uh, and so I think we need to all keep that, uh, front of mind, and that the work that we're doing is, is not just for the here and now, but the work that we are doing is for the future health of our society. Um, that, uh, uh, the conference, I, I was able to glean a lot from it and have been already able to share some resources, both with, um, our city departments and with McMinnville Water and Light. Um, and moving to McMinnville Water and Light, uh, last night, we approved the Memorandum of Understanding, um, on the Miller property, so we can now move forward and start next stepping the swimming pool and recreation facility plans. Um, and then it was also a momentous evening last night. Um, Kathy Tate was elected chair of the McMinnville Water and Light Commission. Um, and so while I thank her for her service, I also want to note that, um, uh, until last night's election, uh, and we thank very much Tom Tankersley, who served 33 years as chair of McMinnville Water and Light. Um, and, uh, so, let's see, beyond those things, um, I want to take a moment to especially thank our library, who, our library staff that made it in and stayed open, um, and was sure to act as a warming shelter during the ice storm. So a lot of gratitude for that city department and the work that they were, um, that, that they came in to do, um, while, uh, we don't build our libraries to be warming shelters. Um, that, uh, was, is a, was a necessary function, and we thank them so much for stepping into that work. Um, and in closing, I'm going to be looking for a nod from the council. Um, the legislature has assigned, um, Housing Oregon's Workforce, the HOW bill, uh, bill number. It's House Bill 4134, Housing Oregon's Workforce, or HOW. Uh, as we've been saying, if you want to build housing, this is how you do it. Um, the bill has dropped with tremendous bipartisan support. I think we're at 15 or maybe even over 15 cosponsors at this point, um, both from the House and the Senate, um, Democrats and Republicans. Uh, it is moving forward unopposed with the support of the Home Builders Association. As a note, um, this bill will, will fund the infrastructure for Zone 2, the water infrastructure for Zone 2. Now, this was a planned development that was approved in 2007 that has never developed because of the inability for, uh, the cost of this infrastructure to be paid for. Um, so it'll be, uh, a one-time infrastructure investment. It'll open up 290 lots that are already approved inside the UGB. We've been in communication with the developer. Uh, the bill is set up as kind of a give-get, so the state gives this infrastructure money that'll pass through the city, and in return, other than getting the housing online that was approved, um, a, a long time ago, um, the developer also commits back 30% of the housing, uh, for 10 years, for those earning 130% of local area median family income. So for us, that is our firefighters, that's our teachers, um, that's your mayor, uh, and, uh, I, I thought about saying that at Water and Light, and I didn't. We'll see how it, um, but it's true. Um, so it's really, it's, this is a workforce housing bill. Um, it's infrastructure that spits out housing. We're really hoping that this bill will move forward intact because the policy suggestions in it are so important that they move forward with the bill. Um, Representative Elmer has just done an incredible job. Our project is not the only project in the bill. She has put together, uh, 10, I believe, 10 total projects in 10 different cities, uh, across Oregon. So passage of the bill will create over 1,100, promises to create a minimum of 1,100 housing units, and there is a time demand, so this will happen in the immediate future. The infrastructure has to be completed within two years, and the housing within five. So, um, these are all projects, I, like I said, inside the UGB, they're through planning, so these are all ready-to-go projects. It's a powerful bill. Um, I was able to meet with her in the Speaker of the House not long ago, and he said over and over how well-prepared her bill was, and that she had really done a great job vetting all of these different cities and different projects, and that if more bills went to the legislature in the form and, and with the amount of work that her office had put into it, that it would just, we would be able to function a lot better. So really, a lot of gratitude for all of that work that her office has done and for our inclusion in that. Uh, last night, the McMinnville Water and Light Commission, um, agreed to write a letter of support for the bill, and the nod that I'm looking for is a general nod from the council that staff can draft a letter of support, um, to be prepared to, to have the full council sign on, um, uh, supporting Housing Oregon's Workforce, House Bill 4134. So if I could just kind of get a general nod in that direction, that would be great.
I would be delighted to see this happen.
Wonderful. Me too. Um, and- And with that, lastly, I was able to meet with Congresswoman Salinas today and talk a little bit more about our upcoming urban renewal project, the Northwest Rubber Project, where the city has now purchased that land and will be preparing to send it out into redevelopment. So just kind of queuing, queuing the federal government up that we may be needing some assistance with that and other projects. And later this week, I'll be meeting with her grants manager, which is a new position that exists in her office, so that we're not pawing through hundreds and thousands of potential grants, but we're instead bringing very specific projects, and then the grants manager is going to help identify those. And I believe that, I believe the head of purchasing at Water and Light is also going to be in that meeting with me because we have, of course, huge infrastructure projects afoot over there as well. So, sorry for my long report, but I had a lot to report. We will now move to department head reports, and I will start with our city manager, Jeff Towery.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, one item to report tonight. I am thrilled to announce that we have hired a new Public Works Director. Jeffrey Hunsacker will become our Public Works Director near the end of February. We decided we didn't have enough Jeffs in the organization, so there are now five. Although he's completely different, he uses a G on his name. Jeff is currently the city engineer for the city of Beaverton. He's worked there for over seven years. He spent 10 years in the private sector, brings a lot of technical engineering expertise along with management and leadership. We'll have a media release that goes out sometime tomorrow, and so we'll welcome Jeff officially onboard near the end of February.
Thank you. Mr. Leitenberg.
Nothing from the legal department tonight. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Finance Director Jennifer Quayar.
Nothing to report. You guys will be hearing from me several times tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. City Recorder Claudia Sisneros.
Yes, as you mentioned, Mayor, we will have a joint work session on March 18th. It will be at the McMinnville School District Office. They're hosting us this time. And then that same week, we also have on March 20th, a joint work session with council and MAC Water and Light, and they'll be at the police department training room.
Thank you. And I might just add, we're still working with the school district, setting the agenda exactly for the 18th, but for the Water and Light joint work session, we're going to be focused on emergency management. And we've set a date for the community fair and state of the city address, which is May 30th.
Yes, May 30th.
May 30th. Wonderful. Thank you. Chief Scales.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council. First of all, I just wanted to thank Councilor Peralta for the opportunity to be on a show with the staff from Provoking Hope. I thought it was a well-thought-out, well-executed interview, and I think lots of information was being able to provide to our citizens, and thank you again. Real quickly, a couple updates, because I know I've got some from the councilors regarding our recruitment efforts through All-Star Talent, that firm that we hired out of Northern California. It went live last Thursday, and if you have your social media feeds on Facebook Indeed or Instagram, you'll notice that there's been just a social media blast out there. We have already had hundreds of impressions. 30 people have, have stated they're interested, and actually, a number, I believe, six have actually applied through NeoGov, so we're off to a really good start. In addition, as we talk about this, our recruiting hiring efforts are continuing. We've got a number of people expected to be a part of interview panels the first week of Feb. We've got a job offer that's about ready to go out on a lateral from North Dakota, another lateral in backgrounds, two other quasi-laterals that are in relatively early stage of the background. And then lastly, I'd invite anybody that wants to attend this coming Monday at, I believe, 9 o'clock, we'll be swearing in Isaac Gutierrez as our newest police officer for the city. So ongoing, really good efforts by our organization to get this thing ramped up and rolling. I think we're in a good spot to hire a bunch here shortly. I think we've got some good candidates. And that is all I've got. Just wanted to provide that update.
Thank you so much. Community Development Director Heather Richards.
Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Just a quick note to let you know that we will be onboarding two planners here in February to fill our two vacancies that have been vacant for the past six months. One is Taylor Graybell, who will be our new senior planner, and the other is Evan Hipas, who will be our associate housing planner. Both come with great experience that they bring to the table and a lot of energy and fondness for McMinnville. So we're lucky to have them. They have secured housing also, which is good to hear, and will be joining our team.
Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. And interim Public Works Director James Austin.
Good evening, everyone. Public Works, I have nothing to add to that, other than I'm excited to be working with our newest Jeff.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. Has everybody had a chance to review the October 2023 cash and investment report, and does anyone have any questions? All right? Thank you. And has everyone had a chance to review the November 2023 cash and investment report, and does anyone have any questions? Okay, we'll now move to our consent agenda, seeing as there's one item only. I'm not going to ask if anybody would like to have anything removed, but does anybody need to discuss this beyond just entertaining a motion to approve? I would entertain a motion to approve the...
I move that we approve Resolution 202404.
Thank you. I have a motion from Councilor Manke. Could I have a second?
Second.
And a second from Councilor Payne. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution passes unanimously. We'll now consider Resolution Number 2024-05, a resolution adopting a plan of action to address audit deficiencies encountered in the fiscal year 2022/23 financial statement for the city of McMinnville. Now, we did just have a work session on this, but I will still call on our finance director, Jennifer Quayar, to present.
Thank you very much. Good evening. So, so as, as a result of having these findings called out, we need to file, within 30 days of filing our audit, a plan of action, how, how we intend to address and improve our internal controls so that these kinds of things are unlikely to happen in the future. So what you have before you on the, on the city business will be essentially the same plan that will be at your urban renewal meeting as well, because the findings are the same. So we anticipate there will be a modest financial impact. We are securing some support to help us put together some solid trainings, do some policy review, help us create some good resources for, for us around both capital accounting as well as long-term revenue recognition, specifically loan activity accounting. And let's see, if folks have any specific questions, either about the process, about the findings, or our upcoming plans, I'm happy to, to take them.
Thank you. Are there any questions for our finance director at this time? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-05.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Manke and a second from Councilor Peralta. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. Thank you so much. I will now adjourn this council meeting at 7:40 PM, and I will call to order the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for January 23rd, 2024. I'll call that meeting to order. Do we need to do a roll call for that? No, wonderful. We have a resolution before us. We're going to consider Resolution Number 2024-01, a resolution adopting a plan of action to address audit deficiencies encountered in the fiscal year 2022/23 financial statements for the city of McMinnville Urban Rule, Urban Renewal Agency. Does our finance director have anything you'd like to add from your previous presentations?
No, this action plan is identical to the city's.
Thank you. Do any councilors have any questions at this time? Not hearing any, I would ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilor Payne and a second from Councilor Chenoweth. All, a motion to approve Resolution Number 2024-01. Just for clarity, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, say nay. And the resolution has passed unanimously. I will now adjourn this Urban Renewal Agency meeting at 7:41 PM for a one-minute meeting, and we will now go into City Council Executive Session. Today is Tuesday, January 23rd, 2024, and an executive session of the City Council is called to, will be called to order shortly. We will be going into executive session pursuant to ORS 192.660-sub2-subF to consider information or records that are exempt by law from public inspection, and pursuant to ORS 192.660-sub2-subJ to carry on negotiations under ORS Chapter 293 with private persons or businesses regarding proposed acquisition, exchange, or liquidation of public investments. Thank you so much.